We have a constitutional crisis. Someone has taken my gavel. Crisis averted. Scouts, you take a note? You can write about this day in your journals. All right, let's go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Start with roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Bagley.
Oh, yes, here.
Councilmembers Christensen.
Here.
Finley. Martin.
Here.
Peck. Rodriguez.
I'm here.
Waters.
I'm here.
Mayor Bagley, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. I would like to invite one of our local Boy Scouts down to lead us in the pledge. Asa Rochelle, what troop are you guys?
Troop 66.
Troop 66. Do you want to have us all stand and...
Yes, sir.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. All right, just a quick reminder, actually, it doesn't really matter tonight, there's only five people on Public Invited to be Heard. Plus, Don, there's only five people, Don Dulce, on Public Invited to be Heard. You are number six, but you want to go last. Is there anybody else that wants on this list, or else you're going to get kicked to the back of the meeting? All right. Let's go ahead and have approval of minutes. Do we have a motion for the February 27th minutes? No, really? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I move approval of the February 27th minutes.
All right, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Do I have a vote for the approval of the March 5th regular session minutes?
I move.
Councilmember Finley, it's not up yet. Actually, Councilmember Peck.
I move approval of the March 5th minutes.
Second.
All right, let's vote. And I'm pretty sure that passes unanimously, too. Do I have a motion for March 20th?
Some moved.
All right.
Second.
Let's vote. That passes unanimously as well. All right, do we have any agenda revisions, or submission of documents, or motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to the future? I have nothing, Harold. No one else? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead. City manager, do you have a report?
No report, mayor, council.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to a proclamation designating April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Longmont. Do we have anybody here to accept the proclamation? Scouts, we need an honorary child to come be beaten. Volunteers? Asa, do you want to designate someone? All right. Okay, I'll just go ahead and read it, then. It says, "This is a proclamation designating April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, there are more than 2,500 substantiated reports of child abuse in Boulder County each year, and approximately 300 children living in foster care in Boulder County due to abuse. That number having increased every year for the past four years. And whereas, Voices for Children, CAS of Boulder County, provides powerful advocacy for children who have been abused and neglected. And whereas, volunteers are needed to help combat the growing problems of child abuse in Boulder County. And whereas, Child Abuse Prevention Month is an annual awareness month for our community to recognize that child abuse is a priority for strong nurturing communities like our own. We can get involved and play a role in preventing child abuse and neglect by promoting child and family well-being. And whereas, Child Abuse Prevention Month aims to inform the community on reporting child abuse concerns and educates people on ways to get involved with organizations working with child victims, like Voices for Children and our partner organizations. Now therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Longmont, and invite to learn about those suffering from child abuse and how they can help. Sign the mayor." So, we'll get this mailed off to whoever it needs to get mailed off to. All right, let's go ahead and move on to first call Public Invited to be Heard. We have a very special guest tonight. This is the first time I have actually invited anyone to Public Invited to be Heard, and I hope no one takes offense. It could be a very controversial political topic, but we're going to move her. She's listed second, but I'd like her to start. Emily Robertas? And if we cannot time her, it's right around three minutes. Come on up, Ms. Robertas.
Do you want to use this one?
And this is a letter that she sent the mayor and some of the council members, and I thought it was worthy of public discussion.
Dear City Council, I am writing to you because Colorado and its cities are negatively affecting the United States' biggest dead zone, the Gulf of Mexico. When our rivers get polluted, it goes down to the Gulf of Mexico, hypoxinating it. And when it gets too hypoxinated, which it already has, it becomes a dead zone. Dead zones let no kind of marine life live there. One animal has been literally blooming: jellyfish. Jellyfish blooms are when jellyfish are in a group. But because of hypoxinated ocean areas, climate change, fishing, and pollution, the jellyfish population has become so large, jellyfish now occupy six continents. Jellyfish are also technically invincible. Some live forever, and the only way that they can die is if they are taken out of water. And even when they're dead, they can still sting, and their bodies take an extensive amount of time to decompose. The smaller they are, the less time it will take to decompose. With jellyfish populations always on the rise, no other animal can live there, creating a lot less marine biodiversity. And also, the most venomous animal in the world falls into the jellyfish category: the box jellyfish. There have been more and more deaths every year. And for comparison, sharks are nothing compared to jellyfish. Sharks only kill four humans every year, and jellyfish kill over 50. And that rate gets higher and higher. The Ircandu jellyfish sting has no cure, and its prey has less than three minutes left to live. So the more jellyfish, the less we will be able to swim without dying. This crisis needs to stop, and I have absolutely no control on how to help this. If we keep hypoxinating our already hypoxated dead zone, there will be consequences that we are soon to face. It could lead to have only one animal in the entire ocean. But if we were to stop, we can save so much marine life, and at least pause the blooming for a long, long while. It is still possible to save the Gulf. Please help by doing whatever you can: raise money or make a law not to pollute Longmont. This can lead to a jellyfish apocalypse. They are now able to occupy fresh water and rivers. Please help. Sincerely, Emily Robertas."
Thank you. So, lesson is, when you write, City Council, we respond, "You're the youngest person to ever write, at least me." And I think that was the most educational, most well-written letter that I think I've read as a city council member. And so, not only that, but it was extremely interesting. I've shared it with everybody. I thought it was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. There you go. Dow Peters? Is it Sam?
Dan.
Oh, Dan, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Looks like Dow, sorry.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dan Peters. I live at 1438 Morningside Drive here in Longmont. Tonight Airport Manager Slater will present to you the airport annual report, but I'd like to say a few things about that is not in the report. In the report, you will hear about the number of operations, maintenance performed, and yes, even the noise complaint stats. But what is not in the report are the number of business aircraft that have landed, the number of doctors that have been flown in to perform a specialized surgery at the Longmont Hospital, or even the number of doctors that have flown out to give services in rural areas that otherwise would not have access to. Number of kids introduced to aviation through the Young Eagles program is also not in the report. The number of airline pilots and military pilots that trained or built their experience at Longmont is not in the report. The number of transient airplanes crisscrossing the country that needed to stop in Longmont for gas or to get out of bad weather is not in the report. This is but a small list of benefits or utility to the community that are not in the report. There's one more thing that's not in the report, in my opinion, it's the most important thing, and that is the joy that the airport has brought to tens of thousands of pilots, skydivers, and airplane watchers every year. People love to fly, and many who don't still love to watch airplanes and skydivers. The city provides parks, trails, golf courses, music on the river, and festivals down Main Street because it brings joy to the citizens of Longmont, and the airport is no different. I applaud all of you for sacrificing your time to be on the council. You wanted to make change and to guide Longmont to a better future. And with that power comes responsibility to listen to both sides of an issue and to seek the truth. Several of you have been approached by the intolerant haters of Citizens for Quiet Skies and intentionally misled about the airport and pilots. I encourage you to have a study session with the airport advisory board and find out the truth about the airport. It's time that the city starts protecting and investing in the airports that can be an even greater asset and benefit. I encourage all of you to visit the airport, meet with the businesses, see the delight on the face of a 16-year-old after sewing an airplane for the first time, watch the skydivers scream with joy on their way down, and count the cars parked outside the fence just enjoying the sights. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dan Berry.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I am Dan Berry. I live at 930 Champion Circle, and I live under the airport traffic pattern on purpose at the Longmont Airport. As a past airport advisory board member and one of the three key organizers of the 2016 Expo, I'm really concerned about our continued demonization of the pilots who access our national airspace system through our airport. We are not lawless, and we are not freeloaders. My story is, I started when I was nine years old. I was first exposed to aviation at nine years old. That experience motivated me to get a paper route, so that paper route could fund my now habit of flying airplanes. That gave me the exposure, that helped pay my way to my pilot's license. I got my first license when I was 15 in gliders. I had to get my parents, or friends, or somebody to take me to the airport or ride my bicycle from my paper route to get to the local airport. By the time I was 16, I got my private pilot's license with a powered airplane, and I could actually drive a car. Got my driver's license and my pilot's license at the same time. All of my airplane experiences motivated me to become an engineer, and that engineering career lasted for 36 years. And that engineering career allowed me to be in the aerospace industry for all those years, and buy a hangar at the Longmont Airport, and pay land leases for the last 25 years, pay taxes, pay my way. I buy fuel, I buy my oil, I do what I can do to help the local airport with the money that I have to spend on this. It also allowed me to move from Louisville to Longmont under the airport traffic pattern on purpose because I wanted to live closer to the airport. So I claim that not one entity at the airport, any business at the airport, or any one organization defines our airport or defines me as a pilot. So what I offer you as city council and city staff is a renewed conversation and a renewed interpretation of our Longmont Airport. So please visit me at the airport, it's an open invitation. Please visit us at the 2018 Expo that we're planning right now, and please come and join the other 4,000 silent supporters. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, Kristi Martinez?
Good evening. My name is Kristi Martinez. I live at 9120 North 75th Street. As a merit badge counselor and wife of a scoutmaster, I want to thank you all for welcoming the members of Boy Scout Troop 66. Boy Scout Troop 66 is honored to be the oldest operating troop in the city of Longmont. This year, we celebrate our 93rd anniversary. We are excited that we are growing and going strong in scouting. The scouts here tonight are here to fulfill the requirements for citizenship in the community merit badge. They will be listening and taking notes, and are especially interested where two opinions are offered about a particular issue. So please don't be shy about expressing your differing opinions, as you are helping these scouts greatly. For the past two months, these boys have met weekly during our meetings to learn and express what it means to be a good citizen. Our community issue of choice is homelessness in Longmont. They have volunteered over eight hours of their time serving dinner, and organizing cleaning, and helping out the Agape Family Services Organization. We were also blessed by a visit to our meeting from Karen Roney of the Longmont Community Services Department. The best part of our experience is that the boys got to meet personally citizens of Longmont who don't presently have a place to sleep at night, but aren't much different than any of the rest of us. These boys had a chance to listen to real, candid, and honest stories from folks who have struggled with addictions, poor choices, hanging out with the wrong kinds of friends, getting jobs, being able to afford housing in this community, and broken relationships. They have also heard of tremendous stories of victory and accomplishment for those who choose not to give up on themselves or their families, and have chosen to take advantage of resources provided to them in this community. I believe the 12- to 17-year-old boys you see behind me have a very deep understanding of what it means to be a good citizen in the community. Please take a look at their faces, because you will recognize them as your future leaders. I want to thank Mayor Bagley for accepting our invitation to attend our upcoming Court of Honor at the end of this month. We are grateful that you are taking time out of your busy schedule to share your scouting experiences and what it means to answer the call to elected service in our community. We want to thank all of you council members for answering the call to be good citizens in our community and serving as elective representatives. With my remaining time, I wanted to shift gears to speak out as a citizen of what I thought might be a differing opinion in our community. My family and I live approximately one and a half miles southwest of the airport in our Homestead Dairy Farm that has the first deeded before Colorado was a state. We live right in the middle of the area of influence of the airport. I read the newspaper every day and notice that there is a small number of people who seem to give impression that the airport and aircraft are a nuisance and detriment to our community. I want you to know that I believe that the airport is a jewel and asset to our community in a multitude of ways. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So usually, I cut them off right at three minutes, but she's here with a bunch of scouts, so I will admit, I was a little biased. All right, Howard Morgan? I will cut you off at three, my friend.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Howard Morgan, 1932 Amethus Drive. I've been on this airport for close to 25 years, and have worked tirelessly on numerous projects on the airport for a lot of that time. Chairman of the Airport Board, president of the Hangar Owner and Pilots Association, and numerous other things. And what's frustrating to me is that I don't think any of you on the city council know exactly what's going on at the airport. It seems to be hung up on one issue, and there's many, many more. Some of the previous speakers have talked about that. We have a surgical team that flies in, we have angel flights where people fly cancer patients for free, we have flights for kids for free. I can't tell you all the things that are happening in three minutes, but if you can get a hold of me or some of the other people on the airport, you can find out. Another thing that's frustrating is our airport, the facility is pretty poor. If we travel around, or as we travel around the state, we see airports on cities that have a population of less than 10% of what ours is, and they're beautiful. And I just visited a town out in the country, 1,500 people, put ours to shame. We've got businesses that come in here every day, and more and more, and it's a pretty poor showing for the city to see our facility, I think. And I'd like to see some efforts made to do some improvements. There's some of the biggest businesses in our town own airplanes or use airplanes, and I'm sure they're not thrilled. Plus, the visitors that come are probably not thrilled either. So, like I said, if you want to find out more, the information is available, and I'd be glad to help spread the word, and I won't take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, that concludes our first Public Invited to be Heard. Let's go ahead and move on to consent agenda. Could you, Valerie, please read the consent agenda items?
Yes. Item 8A is ordinance 2018-16, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 24th. Item 8B is ordinance 2018-17, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vansbram Municipal Airport, Hangar Parcel H28A, to Jeffrey W. Seawald and Leslie Kaprowski. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 24th. Item 8C is ordinance 2018-18, a bill for an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to the lease agreement between the city of Longmont as LEC and the Archdiocese of Denver as LSOR for the use of St. John the Baptist Church parking lot for Longmont City employee parking. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 24th. Item 8D is ordinance 2018-19, a bill for an ordinance approving an economic incentive agreement with Creative Learning Centers Systems, LLC. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for April 24th. Item 8E is Resolution 2018-40, adopting a revised investment policy for the city. Item 8F is Resolution 2018-41, approving and adopting investment in the Colorado statewide investment pool. Item 8G is Resolution 2018-42, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Regional Air Quality Council for grant funding for the purchase of compressed natural gas vehicles. Item 8H is Resolution 2018-43, authorizing an agreement between the city and SSP LLC for the purchase of real property for the Sunset Street and Boston Avenue Road Widening Project. Item 8I is Resolution 2018-44, approving the revocable permit and agreement between the city and Pawnee Development LLC for parking, mowing, and irrigation on part of Outlet D of the Golden Moving and Storage subdivision. Item 8J is Resolution 2018-45, approving the 2018 intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for environmental sustainability grant funding. Item 8K is Resolution 2018-46, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city of Boulder as the lead agencies for the Boulder Broomfield Regional Home Consortium and for a subrecipient agreement for home funds. Item 8L is Resolution 2018-47, approving amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for CDVGDR funding on behalf of the Boulder County Collaborative. Item 8M is Resolution 2018-48, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for the use of Longmont Fire Stations 3 and 5 as voter service and polling centers during the 2018 general election. Item 8N is Resolution 2018-49, authorizing CDOT entryway signage on Highway 119. Item 8O is approval of an agreement with the Boulder Small Business Development Center for review of business plans contained in Longmont marijuana applications. And item 8P is approval and authorize the mayor to sign the special counsel contract with Littler Mendelson PC for legal advice and counsel relative to HIPAA matters. And staff does not need to pull any items.
Great. Are there any council members that want to pull any items? Dr. Waters?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
First, I guess, all those scouts understand you are an Eagle Scout. Do they know that?
I don't know, but I am an Eagle Scout.
Did you all know that? Okay, there you go. Now the whole community knows that you're...
And you guys also know he was my school district superintendent when I was in high school?
I think I handed you your Eagle Scout award.
Yes, he did. So, yeah, it's a little uncomfortable up here sometimes, but Dr. Waters keeps me in control.
So I'd like to pull items J and P from the consent agenda. Mayor Protem?
No, I wanted to...
Turn it off.
I wanted to pull P, too, so never mind.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to move the consent agenda minus J and P.
All right, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and read, let's go ahead and deal with our ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 2018-15, a bill for an ordinance amending section 4.16.010 of the Longmont Municipal Code of allowable investments. Are there any questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2018-15. Do we have any members of the public who are dying to talk about investments? Seeing no one, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Can I have a motion? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to move passage of ordinance 2018-15.
All right, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, let's go back to item J. Dr. Waters, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is not a big-ticket item, but as I read it, anything that kind of is teed up as a pilot program sparks my interest for a couple reasons. Assuming that the program is successful enough that it makes the difference intended, we would see something that returns to the council to take to some kind of scale or for inclusion in the budget and implementation as a regular initiative or program in the city. So, when I look at this and I see outcomes that are listed, which are quality outcomes, however, there are no metrics in here. So, what sparks my interest is when I see increased resident knowledge and understanding of resource conservation, like what does that really mean, and how good is good enough, and what would trigger a recommendation to come back to the council for full implementation beyond a pilot program? And number two, when I see reduced utility bills for low-income residents, it's like reduced how much from what to what? And when I see better understanding of the program, it's like, okay, what... what to what? And when I see better understanding of the program, it's like, okay, what is better, what is good enough in terms of better? And who's going to do the external evaluation on this? Or what's the program evaluation look like? And how rigorous is that? And, you know, we're going to get a recommendation based on the results of that program evaluation and those metrics. So, I'm fully supportive of the funding and the pilot program, but anticipating that if it's implemented well, we're going to see a recommendation for full implementation. How would we know how good is good enough?
And since nobody's in the queue, I just want to vehemently object. We shouldn't have clean environment. We shouldn't have metrics. And we shouldn't collect data. There's nothing to argue about tonight. I'm trying to give you guys a show. You wanted, you wanted, anyway, I'm kidding. Dale, do you have a...
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Waters, you're absolutely right. And staff is working to, every time we come in front of you, to have clear and definable metrics. And in this case, I agree with you. They're a bit ambiguous. We can certainly follow this up with additional information items to further clarify that. But you're correct, this is a pilot program, so there is a bit of uncertainty with regards to how well it works and how well it does things. And that's obviously why you do pilot programs. And so, if the council would like, we could certainly follow up with those metrics. And that is an ongoing effort to continue to define how much from what to what and what is our trend. To me, it's really the trend. Which way are you trending and how does that look? And how does it support the overall goals of the city? So, I think we get that. And again, that's something we'll continue to improve on.
All right, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to add, not that I disagree with Councilmember Waters' remarks, because I think it's absolutely true. And it's been said several times by this council that we need to do something better about this. And I'd like to point out that in the boards that I sit on, in the last month, I've actually seen two annual reports from boards that had exactly the problem that Councilmember Waters described. And earlier, I had a conversation with one of the assistant city managers about this being sort of an endemic problem with the way the city approaches projects. And so I am wondering if the council should not take this matter under advisement. I think we have expectations about the departments that we have never clarified. And if we are going to have more rigid expectations, a certain minimum requirement for reporting annually and quarterly, that we should set forth those expectations and stop holding people to a standard that we have not clearly defined. So, what I propose is we should be scheduling a retreat for the council, and coming up very soon now. And I would like to propose that we devote some time to setting forth our expectations about reporting at that retreat. And then we can bring it before the public and before the staff. So, I also think maybe that we should call a truce until we've done that. But I want to say, you know, we have been hearing, and I'm just trying to give you some discord here, guys. I want to say that, you know, we have heard two sides of the story about the airport. And there's clearly merit in people's observation about the airport. But if we had more quantified goals about what the airport is supposed to accomplish, and a year-to-year record of whether those goals were met, whether the city was net investing in the airport, or whether the airport was net returning revenue to the city, and so on, then maybe that would quiet the argument somewhat, because we would be able to quantitatively agree whether what was going on with the airport was a fair deal or not.
I'm going to go ahead and wrap this back into the, I think it's a great conversation, metrics, data, all for it. But let's maybe have that at the end of the meeting. And just for the scouts, just so you know, so what AJ's dealing with is it's a pilot program that they're going to put in one single-family neighborhood and in one multi-family housing complex. And we're partnering with Boulder County. And then the whole point is to focus on water and energy conservation, so we can increase knowledge in the community, reduce our utility bills, and have a better understanding about how the city can decide in the future how to expand the program and whatnot. And so, but I'm all for metrics, regardless of where they are. So, do we have a motion? Sorry, Mayor Protem Christensen, do you have anything pursuant to Item J?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Well, I, you know, we all need to have information and some sort of outcomes that are measurable to some degree. I do think that if this is successful, we will be able to apply this to other similar efforts to educate people about water and about general sustainability and energy. And also, I do believe we have, we will have a hard outcome after about a year after this pilot program by looking at people's energy bills and see whether they have actually conserved or not. And that's certainly a good metric, as is a survey at the end of it. So, I don't think this is without any kind of accountability, or without any kind of way to measure goals.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I'll be brief this time. I just would like to ask Councilmember Christensen, if we don't have any metrics, how do we know whether the pilot was a success or not, and whether there is any pointing going on to the next level? So, I would like to see a definition of done with the pilot. How do we know when the pilot is done and whether the outcome is good or bad? I think that if we're, especially if we're going to spend money on something that hasn't been proven elsewhere, we should have that definition of done.
All right. So, Mayor Protem Christensen? Can you see it?
I can read.
Okay, well, I'm going to read it for, so in the packet, the very last paragraph, it's split. It says, "The project's success will be measured by the number of households and participants engaged in the program, the number of gallons of water and energy saved through efficiency improvements, associated greenhouse gas reductions, and reduction in utility bills. We will measure qualitative success through before and after surveys to ascertain changes in resident and technician knowledge, skills, and attitudes around resource conservation and sustainability." So, there will be some metrics that we get out of it, and it's kind of like putting our toe in the water, and then we can potentially roll it out from there. I believe that's the, is that the idea? Say yes, Dale.
Yes. And again, metrics are great for the hard quantification, and sometimes qualitative results and outcomes also need to be examined and analyzed and reported, so.
I'll accept that. Thank you.
Do you guys feel the tension, scouts? Do you see the government in action? We are really pushing the limits here. All right, Mayor Protem Christensen?
Oh, never mind.
Nothing? All right. Dr. Waters, do you want to make a motion for 8J?
I will move approval of Item 8J. Beautiful.
Second.
All right, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Waters, Item P?
I have a similar concern on Item P. Well, this, again, this is a low-cost item, and it makes great sense as I read the background information in the agreement. But as I read the executive summary, and it refers, again, to goals and objectives, I had to go back to the, I think, the March 20th packet, page 153, to go and look at the goals and objectives and/or the outcomes. And it's all good stuff. This has a bigger price tag, I think, at the end of the day, if the pilot proves successful, to come back to the council for inclusion in the budget. But I was left with similar questions when I looked at the material, and I obviously should have looked more carefully when that item came before us, in terms of what the, how good would be good enough in the pilot to bring it back for full implementation? That was my concern with this particular item. It was similar, different program, with different implications financially, I think.
All right, there's nobody in the queue, therefore no further discussion. Dr. Waters, do you want to make a motion?
I will move approval with the assumption that we will see subsequent to this evening some idea of what would be good enough in this pilot program to warrant recommendation for approval, should that happen. Will we see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote. I'm pretty sure that was unanimous, and it was. All right, let's move on to general business. 2017 annual, or airport annual, or sorry, 2017 airport annual report. Slater, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. David Slater, I'm your airport manager. So, some of the goals in 2017 was to increase our public outreach and awareness, promote southside development, and beautify the airport. And we've had a lot of degradation over the past several years of pavement maintenance, so we wanted to increase the pavement and runway maintenance, and get our investors out at the airport and operators connected up with NextLight, and improve our financial stability and sustainability. Rather than reading through each of the bullet points, you've seen the annual report. You're familiar with what's in there. This is more of a highlight for the community, as well as yourselves. But I wanted to, one of the big things that happened in the first part of the year, or middle of the year, is in May, Vance Brand was in town, and we made a presentation of our new logo. We have created a mission patch, which includes the part of his mission patch on the Apollo 2S project, test project. Although that's the one that's highlighted, I also wanted to point out in May, the National Guard and Fire Department Wildfire Training took place. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that last week and this week, they're also out there and training hard to save lives and property. Some of the other accomplishments in 2017, in addition to finalizing the marketing plan goals for our marketing and public awareness, was in October, we spent approximately $24,000 for pavement maintenance. As I mentioned, pavement degrades over the years, and with such a tight budget, it's been almost impossible to keep up with all the maintenance needs. But now we're getting on track. We've had some increase in revenue and good assistance and good contracts coming in with good pricing. And so, we're able to get a lot done. That included grinding of the runway. There were some issues for pilots that seemed to be a dip in the runway, and it was actually two high spots. So, we were able to address that issue by grinding on the runway. We made pothole repairs, repairs to taxiways. We did a crack seal and a seal coat on some of the taxiways as well. Good news is LPC brought in, began installing NextLight in November, and they are just wrapping up that project. It's really important for some of our investors, because one of them does aerial surveying and mapping, which is a lot of data to be transferred. And so, this is going to be a big help to them. They've actually started expanding their operations and brought in more employees and aircraft, which is even more revenue for the city and the community. There's been a lot of questions about the cell phone tower, and there were questions if that revenue went to the airport fund. And because it is on airport property, and it is leased with the airport, it does go to the airport fund. We had conversations with the folks that manage that for the three different carriers, and there were capacity increases. And we had discussions with them to increase the capacity, which has also increased our revenue to in excess of $77,000 annually. Some of the services offered at the airport include airframe and power plant repair and inspection, aircraft fabric covering, material sales and restoration. The Aircraft Interior Restoration and Repair and Replacement is a new company that started up recently. So, we do have a new company that started up in the past year and a half, which is positive growth. Of course, we do aircraft fueling and servicing at the airport. And there's a whole litany of other services offered that you've seen in the report. Flight and ground instruction is a big part of that, because we do contribute to not only the national airspace system, but we also provide pilots to the military and to the air carriers, the airlines. And right now, the airline is experiencing a significant shortage. And so, flight instruction has been never more important than these days. And of course, in addition to the tours and catering, we do have a seasonal restaurant that people visit during that season, between May and October. You heard mention of people coming out to watch aircraft and activities at the airport. This is also a big draw for people to, while they're watching the activities and enjoying the airport, they can also get a bite to eat. And it's a aviation-themed restaurant, food truck. So, some of the more highlighted things that the Airport Board wanted to point out are things like pilots in pause. While this is a nationwide and worldwide, actually, organization, there were 11 Longmont pilots that volunteered on this this past year and saved several animals from euthanization. 31 dogs were transported and saved. Angel Flight, this is something that was brought up a couple of times in public and invited to be heard as well, where pilots donate their time, aircraft, and resources, funded strictly by their own cost, to transport cancer patients, organs, things that save lives. And whereas, a lot of times, these families couldn't afford to get the treatment that they need just because of the travel expenses and cost. We do have a Civil Air Patrol Cadet Squadron. As you know, they're an official auxiliary of the U.S. Air Force. They are a 501(c)(3), and they assist in aircraft search and rescue missions and provide assistance at civic events such as the Airport Expo and Air Show. That will be June 23rd of this year. Light Hulk Conservation Flying, their motto is "We Fly to Save the Earth." They volunteer for conservation efforts, which include tracking endangered wildlife and environmental data collection, as well as scientific aerial image. We also have a couple of base helicopters that have been very generous, and not only did they help during the 2013 floods, they also helped with search and rescue and recovery missions. In fact, the Boulder County Sheriff has issued a letter of commendation for this assistance. Additional airport activities include Mount Haskata. This was put in specifically, I think, to let people know. I think that people don't realize that in 2017, there were over 40,000 jumps, 8,000 customers, and they brought family and friends along, which was another 22,000 people. There are several people that's involved in the certification process. We have... We have a local skydiver who won the 2017 World Cup. The Denver Broncos Thunderstorm parachute team that skydives into Broncos Stadium or was featured recently and on, on a national televised event. And then the board also wanted you to know that the Jeff Sands Endowment Fund has contributed quite a bit to the community, including over 100,000 to the Longmont Sour Center. Bob Freeman is a local pilot who performs with U.S. Unlimited Aerobatic Team, and they represented the U.S. in the 2017 World Aerobatic Competition, Open Competition in South Africa. This is important because even airlines require some aerobatic training of their pilots just to keep things safe in case they get into unusual attitudes. Going into the noise abatement review, there were three positive comments, one hobbyist role notification, 949 total noise complaints that were logged, and all but 20 were directed at the skydiving business. And there were a total of 28 people that filed complaints, which is a decrease by five people from 2016. The next chart just goes through the types of complaints, whether it's skydiving, general aviation, or jet. And then it has a breakdown of how many people complained how many times. I think this is something that, that we've all reviewed, and it ranges from, from one complaint up to a large number. And that's my presentation. I want to save a little time for any questions that you may have had.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and thank you, Mr. Slater. I always appreciate this report every year. I, one of the folks who spoke at Public Invited to Be Heard said that there were improvements needed out there at the airport. Can you tell me what those are and what they cost?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Finley, there's, there's a lot of improvements needed. Over years of time, the pavement degrades, and as I mentioned, the, the budget has been so tight and thin over the past several years that it was hard to even keep up with, with the maintenance of, of the infrastructure that is needed. There are taxiways that we've been basically putting Band-Aids on with crack seal and seal coats to extend the life of the pavement until we can get some money to, saved up to, to put towards that. If you did a true rehabilitation of one of the main taxiways out there, it could range, one taxiway would be about $250,000 to completely rehabilitate, another one would be closer to $400,000 to rehabilitate. The, the primary runway and taxiways are in pretty good shape, but we do have several other projects such as cleaning out and, and resealing the joints in the aircraft ramp to keep that from completely degrading and, and starting to break up. That's about a $350,000 project, maybe? And, and there's a long list of, of airport needs, and I'll be happy to, to email that to council of, of what those needs are.
I'd like that, and I also would like to come out and take a look at them sometime, if we could arrange that.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Thank you, Mr. Slater, David. This was, I love this report. It's great. I, I also was concerned about the same thing that Councilwoman Finley asked about, but on a different scale, the ambiance of the airport rather than just the maintenance to keep it afloat. Do we have any interest or plans for, for example, a restaurant or something to make it more feasible for people to come out and enjoy? Is, is there anything in the scope for that? Or do we need actually investors to come out and want to put a restaurant there or to come out and put a shop or whatever it is we need?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, yes, there has been discussion over, over several years of different people interested in, in doing just that, things such as a restaurant. One of the things that I didn't really read out to you was that we began some beautification in, in the front around the, the sign. We want to put some more money into beautification. We want to work with the airport investors between the airport's responsibility and the investors' responsibility and actually collaborate and work together and, and see where that's going to be best spent for the amount of money we have. Typically, most of, of what we're looking at would come from investors or developers who would put a restaurant in. I know that the existing restaurant owners have interest in expanding into bricks and mortar, and some of the folks that have been looking at the idea of, of including a restaurant in, in the developments that they're doing for themselves that would include that have actually approached the, the current operators of Flight Deck Grill to be the person to operate that, just because they're so popular.
Great. And on your list of improvements, at one point you had said that the airport needs to invest in the infrastructure in order to get those, entice those investors, for example, sewer, water, et cetera. Is that investment on your list of projects that you need to do?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, yes, that is one of the things that we've looked at. In fact, we completed a mini master plan for the southwest corner of that vacant property for drainage and utilities that are needed and the type of layout that it would best serve development over there. And there are estimates out there of, of things that we need. We do need help in getting that as a, an attractant for, for developers to come in. That's something that is commonly done. There are different ways to go about that and different ways to look at that, and so we're kind of looking at the best ways to approach that.
Okay, and I just have two more questions.
Sure.
First of all, revenue wise, how do we compare today with revenue from your report last year? Are we up on revenue or is it tabled or?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, we did increase in, in total revenue. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I can tell you that, that what we're projecting for, for 2018 is some $20,000, $25,000 more than we made in 17.
Okay. And, sightseeing tours, do people have to request those or do you have a schedule that you give tours on Tuesdays or Thursdays and just show up? Or do we have to actually schedule those?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, it's better if we make an appointment because I am a one-person department, and I do stay pretty busy trying to, to keep up with, with all the aspects of, of things that we need to do out there. So, it's better to make an appointment.
So, for the Boy Scouts, if you want a tour, Mr. Slater is the one that you should contact to get a tour of that airport.
His personal cell number is 303Z.
And what are the, what are the chances of council going out and getting a tour of the airport?
A hundred percent.
Okay, I would like to sort that out. That would be great. Thank you.
So, I wanted to touch on the infrastructure. So, council may remember, we put $40,000 in general fund monies to actually fund the infrastructure master plan a couple of years ago. In addition, in the last budget process, the council did reduce the ATF fees so that we can inject more revenue in to handle some of these issues. So, there were, those were a couple of steps that we took in this. When we talk about the south side, that's definitely infrastructure that's needed for the development of that, but we also wanted to have the master plan so it was orderly. Infrastructure, I think, one of the things that we've seen on the north side is that the infrastructure is difficult to deal with just because of the way it was put in place and crisscrossed to certain areas. And so, long-term, when you look at the airport, that's something we're going to have to evaluate. Obviously, the major issue with the airport is generating the revenue, and specifically when we try to find the matches for the federal funds that, that come to the airport, because in most airports, that's actually how they fund their capital projects is with the federal aviation funds that come forward.
Dr. Waters? Your Councilmember Waters?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So, the city manager's comments just now and, and Councilmember Peck's last question kind of tees up kind of where I wanted to go with this. You asked about revenues year over year and revenue growth. So, when I saw this on the agenda, what, what I thought I was going to see initially was an actual annual report. And when I got into it and then I've spoken with Sean and, and David and realized this is not that, this is a requirement annually, there's a report from the board. And, and it's all useful information, so I appreciate it and I appreciate the presentation. It just seemed to me that there's a little bit of a missed opportunity here to not talk about this as, as an annual report with objectives, and I'm back to, you know, performance against objectives. I'm a broken record, but I said I would be a broken record, I guess. Yeah, I did say that. This would be, this would be a chance really to talk about how these objectives line up with what looks to me like a mission statement under report for mission in terms of marketing, community interest, numbers of visits, whatever. There's a number of things you might show performance with metrics against, especially on the economic impact. If there's a revenue target, it'd be good to know what it is, right? What the growth target is, how close we can, and what would you need from the council in order to help you meet those targets, right? This year and ensuing years. I mean, that's part of when we get a report, what I'm listening for is what do you want from us to help move the dial on your part of the operation? And I understand if you're a one, one-member department, you only got so many, so many hours in a day, and you might need some assistance with it. But I would hope that, you know, in the future, we might think about this one and others from advisory boards to, to look more like an annual report, at least how we could help use that to, to move the dial in your part of the operation. So, thanks.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I believe in some previous conversations I've had that one unique aspect about our airport is along the south side. We have availability for fee simple ownership of property with through the gate or through the fence access. I was just wondering if there's recommendations from the boards or yourself as how to actually capitalize on this unique aspect to our airport?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Rodriguez, some of the discussions that we've had in the past is there have been some, some talk and discussion with different people, developers and about the possibility of using property, buying or leasing property from AstraZeneca and, and along that area, or possibly on, on the, the north side of the airport, but primarily on the south side. Having the ability to either have office space associated with companies that use corporate aircraft so that they can taxi in and go through the fence. That, that is a little bit further out, and we're just, we're just kind of waiting to see what, what happens with that property in AstraZeneca and, and those developers that have expressed that interest.
I think long-term, one of the things when you talk about infrastructure is really needing taxiways that actually can get you to that point, so that then, then the options start changing dramatically. A lot of times what you'll see where folks want to take advantage of it is some type of, not manufacturing, but maybe retrofitting component, because in most cases, and David, correct me if I'm misspeaking this, when you go onto an airport, a lot of airports, when they sign the contract, they'll come in and say, "You can be there in 30 years," and then you have to remove your improvements or they revert to the airport, or you can do an extension in that. And so, in terms of that long-term investment, folks often look at opportunities where you can have this access. It is rare. Rarely do you see this type of access that's not airport-owned property. A lot of the, the communities I worked in before had the ability for through the fence, but it was still airport property, so you still had those restrictions. But it is fundamentally going to be tied to the infrastructure being put on the south side. And, and so that's where you start seeing all the linkages come in together on this type of project.
And Mayor, council, if I, if I can just add on to that, I know this, this report was more about what happened in 2017, but with him saying that, it kind of segues into a project that we do have coming up this year, that you'll be seeing a grant offer from the FAA and the, the State Aviation Division for a new taxi lane on the south side so that we can actually have hangar development, more development start taking place on the south side. And we have had some discussions with folks that may be interested in building hangars over there, and we have some other folks that are looking into that. Additionally, we are getting ready to put out a request for quotes on, on a scope of work to team with a, a marketing company, just because we can't afford a full-blown marketing firm and, and marketing plan, we're going to team with them to fit the budget that we do have. And that way, we can get the word out to developers, to people interested in hangars, as well as, as the transits that come through there that would want to stop and, and have interest. I get calls almost daily about people interested in hangar space. So, there is, there is a demand out there. There is people interested. We just have to put all the pieces together to get it going that way, and, and that taxi lane where it's being placed now will be an attractant for that.
Great, thank you. Council, or Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This prospect for a warm weekend's coming up now, since we've had a warm weekday finally, reminds me that I have an outstanding tour invitation from the Airport Advisory Board. And if the entire council or a majority of the council is interested in taking a tour with Airport Manager Slater, then it might be a good idea to involve Chairman Van Zandt and anyone he thinks that he would like to bring along with him. And then maybe we could have my...
Could you get up there close to the mic? The paper's making the signal.
He's making the signal, right. Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Anyway, I think it would be good to hear from the members of the board about possibilities, priorities, interests. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that are probably not on our radar screen but might be on the advisory board's radar screen, so I'd just like to suggest broadening that invitation a little bit.
Mayor Proton Christensen?
Thank you for, thank you for the report, David. I was really happy to see that you were able to do those two improvement projects and fix the safety out there. That's something that's concerned me for a couple of years now. And, and that you're getting NextLight in, that'll be helpful. I was wondering if you have talked to LEDP and I know you talked to Visit Longmont. Are they both promoting the airport? I mean, it seems to me that both of those, that's what their mission is. It seems to me it would be good to work with them to try to get them to help promote the airport a little bit, too.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Christensen? Yes, ma'am. In fact, we've had conversations. LEDP has come to the board meetings and made presentations within and vision Longmont and, and how we can include the airport in that document. And so, we do have those conversations, communications. I'm sure it's time for another meeting, but we, we do invite them to the AAB meetings for, to, to make presentations of, of how they're including the airport within the transportation and the overall envision Longmont plan. I'm sorry, advanced Longmont.
And seeing nobody else in the queue, before I say thank you, just, I just want to take the opportunity to, a lot of times, you know, a lot of times, certain members of council kind of get a raw deal, but I just want to point out how positive you hear this council talking about the airport and the issues out there. And so, just don't jump to conclusions. You never know what people are thinking until it actually happens. But thank you very much, Mr. Slater, and for the members of the airport community that showed up and, and have spoken so far. Thank you.
I did want to add one, one thing. Talking about the metrics and the evaluation criteria, that is something that we've been talking about. We, one of the things we really need to get done was... get done was the infrastructure master plan. We've been looking at the airport improvement plan, and we need to develop those to bring back to council because we also have to establish that to really present ourselves in a different way to the FAA in order to get those grant dollars. So, that's something coming. I know that council's been asking that question. Just in case it comes up again, we are working on getting a memo that's going to provide guidance on presentations. And then the council comms to address those questions that we've been seeing recently. And Sandy and I have been talking about it, and she's worked with Holly, specifically because you all referenced Holly's presentation last week. And so, definitely on our radar, and we'll be getting that out.
And I just want to point out, Scouts, can you imagine if Don Hadad, your school district superintendent, was this gung-ho on metrics? Yeah, that's right. You'd all be geniuses. All right, just kidding. Don Hadad's great. All right. Mayor and council comms, actually, let's go on to your final call, public invited to be heard. Don Dulce, you're actually on the list. Would you like to come up?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the, one of the previous council meetings, I believe it would have been around the 27th, when Mr. Slater was scheduled to present this topic. There certainly were a number of people who spoke, and they talked about noise and skydiving and things of that sort, and it was pretty negative about that. So, I just wanted to provide a little information that maybe a number of the new council members are unfamiliar with. And that was back on June 3rd of 2015. John Putnam from the Kaplan-Kershen-Rockwell Organization gave a comprehensive analysis of the federal statutes that control airport noise. And basically, that particular document, the video actually, that was filmed of that meeting, is available on the city of Longmont's airport website. It's still there. It's about an hour long, and it's really worth seeing if you haven't seen it. So, he covers everything the citizenry can do, as well as what the FAA has control over. Basically, in summary, the FAA controls the aircraft and any noise generated by it once it leaves the ground. And through the studies that have been done, there is no impact relative to the DNL-65 criteria that the FAA uses off the airport. It's all low-level noise. And I know people have complained a lot about that, but the FAA sees no problem with the level of noise that is being generated this time. I know a lot of the citizenry that spoke at that meeting would like to see the city take charge of the airport and control the noise in some way. And in reality, as I said before, the FAA is in control of the noise, and they're not anxious to turn that over to anyone else. I think, in summary, all I can say about it is that the community actually does not have an airport noise issue, but there certainly are individuals within the community that have trouble with noise. A comment was also made at that meeting that the airport is not really an economic contributor. And I think several of the people who have been here have already mentioned that there is a lot of contribution by the airport. As can be seen, if you're at the airport, one of the businesses that you probably all do business with has a jet that operates there. And last month, they flew that jet on business 35 times out of this airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dulce. All right, Scouts, anybody want to, you've got three minutes to come say anything you want. Sir, come on up.
My name is Dale Van Zandt. I am the chairman of the Airport Advisory Board. It's been my pleasure to do that for a couple of years.
Just lean in close like this, so everyone can hear.
I'm the chairman. I'm the chairman of the Airport Advisory Board. I've been doing that for a couple of years, and I have another year or so to run on my last term. Councilmember Martin, I would gladly expand the invitation to the entire council to come out, take a tour of the airport, ask questions, look and see what's being done, things that are going on out there. It's pretty vibrant, small airport, and we're pretty proud of it. There's a lot of good stuff being done out there. In that regard, we have an expo, the Longmont Airport Expo, coming up on June 23rd. It's a Saturday. It's a family-oriented event. You'll probably be getting invitations, I'm sure, from David. One of the things we're highlighting this year is something called Planes With a Purpose. The large ramp, parking ramp, in front of the Fly Elite Expo, or Fly Elite FBO, we're going to be displaying planes that use the airport, and other airports like it, for a purpose, ranging from search-and-rescue helicopters, dog rescue, angel flight, a number of airplanes coming in that we're going to be showing to the public. It's a fun day, going to be, hopefully, the weather is nice as it was last time. We'll have a short aerial demonstration, but it's basically for members of the community, come see what they've got out here, the asset they have at Fans Brand Airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
Thank you. Dan Berry, 930 Champion Circle. I really appreciate the fact that you want to come and visit our airport. I'm extremely excited to hear that. One thing I'd like you to notice, and I think is missing, is that there's very little incentive for businesses to develop at the airport. I know of more than one instance where people have been interested in restaurants, hangar expansion, building buildings, and they get through part of the process and they end up walking away. It's so economically upside down that they're not able to do the business. And it's a very interesting paradox at our airport. We have literally everything going on at this airport. I fly many places in this country, a lot of small airports in midtown Nebraska, Iowa. And I fly into these airports and there's nothing going on, nothing. The ramp is empty, no airplanes. They have a beautiful building that is so attractive. It's just upside down how they have the beautiful buildings and attraction and have nothing going on. And we have facilities that are not attractive, and we have everything going on. What if we had both? I think this would be a huge thing. But there's no incentive to improve our 1963 building that's at the airport. And for the Scouts back here, aviation merit badges are an absolutely awesome thing. You'll learn the phonetic alphabet, and you'll be surprised what that takes in life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Council, Scott Stewart, 229 Grand Street. Yeah, I'm kind of beating a negative in any here.
It's okay.
Yeah, I can understand the passion of those that fly. It's- Sorry. I can understand the passion of those that fly. A larger airport to me kind of equals more air traffic. And is it really, want the direction to have? I mean, we already have issues with noise over our city, and are we really looking to try to increase this? The 65 decibel noise average, which is never met or what have you, is, look at the way the matrix is done. It's over a 24-hour period. So, I can scream as loud as I want. But, you know, the average from the decibel rating of your voice during this three-minute period is not going to extend to the volume that I just shouted. Look at the competition that they're up against. You've got Fort Love, you've got Jeffco, bigger, better. There's business going airports. Are we really trying to compete with the big boys that are up there? And there's business coming to Longmont that's flying in and out of those two airports. I think the people that are at this airport are, they've got a difficult road, though. This is not an industry that is, it's in decline. The number of pilots is in decline. It's going the way of the horse and buggy. It's going to take a long time, but it's heading in that direction. I'd like to put a little perspective in. The operations at the airport are, what, 80,000 to 90,000 operations, which is basically, one comes in, one goes out, one comes in, one goes out. Compare that to Main Street, you get 80,000 to 90,000, two to three times a week, as far as vehicles. Not a year, a week. It's, I can understand the passion, and I know a lot of people are probably hating me because, you know, they think I'm a hater of the airport. I've flown, I've jumped, I've flown soarplanes. I'm not a pilot, but I have enjoyed it. I just don't wish to have increased air traffic over our homes. So, figure out a way for it to sustain itself, figure out a way for it to be that great hobby airport that always has been. There's a lot of great pilots there. There's a lot of people flying out of here and going places. There's doctors that go to Kansas, and then they go there for two days and they come back. I understand all of that. Do we really need to increase the airport just for its survival? Let's try to make this airport the best that we can for the people that actually use it.
Thanks, Scott. All right. Anybody else? All right, that will conclude tonight's final call, public invited to be heard. Mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I want to once again bring up the Ed Green Scholarship Dinner and Silent Auction taking place Friday, April 20th. Have a Sister Cities meeting on Thursday. If any of you guys want tickets, I'd be happy to pick them up for you. It's a lot of fun, and it provides scholarships for our ambassadors to go to Chino and Suhrad Guzman. A great time is had by all, good food, good fun. Hope you all will come. It's $10 a person, $25 for a family of three or more. It is at Xylane's Summit Retreat.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just wanted to give a little update on the Transportation Symposium I attended on Friday in Denver. And it was very nice, very informative. Some of it was a little over my head, as I'm not a planner or an engineer in traffic, but or transportation. But it was nice to see some of the examples of where BRT is happening in our region, such as the MAX in Fort Collins, also seeing about some of the bikeability concepts they're talking about, as well as seeing what they're doing with the Volkswagen settlement money in installing charging stations all up and down our interstates to make that more connective throughout the region, being Colorado, Wyoming, Montana. A number of states have signed on to increase the number of electric charging stations so we can get some more mileage and more long range out of our electric vehicles as that evolves. So, just a quick update on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Waters?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is pretty mundane. But as the, never having gone through this, as a rookie, I need some guidance. We are, I'm going to attend my first CML conference in June. The dates, I think, are that there's a pre-conference on the 19th, but the 20th, 21st, and 22nd. If I look at that week, the 19th is a council meeting, that Friday, the 22nd is a Friday morning meeting. And I'm just curious who all is going, and if, does that count as two absences in one week from- Oh, it does. I mean, what's the plan for that week?
Council meeting's canceled.
I think it's canceled, yeah. Oh, good. I'll take it off my calendar. And then I would assume the Friday meeting would be canceled as well? I think I'm the only one in town that week. You guys, I'll go. Bring donuts. I'll adjust my calendar locally. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Christensen?
Well, this is even more mundane. But nevertheless, in the spirit of Bonnie Finley bringing up businesses, several weeks ago, the Boulder Weekly published a little article on a pastry tour of Longmont. So, I'm midway through my pastry tour, and-
We noticed. No, just kidding.
Got to recuperate from the pneumonia. So, I went down to, the Romana Cake House has closed, which is sad, but La Moma Maze took it over, and they're actually making the same stuff that they used to have before. So, they probably have the same cook. Anyway, that's good news. And there's another place called The Other Mama's Bakery, where Georgia Boys started their business and have now moved. And I highly recommend. And they make little pastries that are like little clouds, and they serve lovely tea. So, if you're lacking something to do on a Saturday or afternoon, check it out.
You had me at pastry. All right. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is not mundane. I spent Monday at the Boulder, University of Colorado Boulder Council on World Affairs, which is actually going on all week. And they are, brought in thinkers and panels of experts, of literally people in every area of world affairs, and are, you can hear a discussion on just about any matter of current events that's going on today. It goes on for three more days, the rest of this week. And I would just like to encourage everybody to look that up under the University of Colorado Council on World Affairs, or CWA, and see if there's something out there to interest you, because there's someone to interest almost anybody. And it's free and open to the public. There's an app that you can download, also free, to help you find your way around. But as long as there's a seat, you can go. So, I encourage everybody to do it, because it's a great event.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. And just piggybacking on what Councilwoman Martin said, the parking there is pretty tight, but you can take the bus, which picks you up by, I forget the name of it, but it used to be Applebee's, and it will drop you off either at Folsom or downtown Boulder. And it's a very short walk to any of the events. Take a lunch, too. It's a great place to have a picnic.
Just real quick, I think I owe an apology to council. I might have, it just dawned on me halfway through tonight's meeting that I might have created a, I don't think it's a problem. It's a problem that I didn't bring it up beforehand, but I hope nobody minds that, nobody's going to care that I did it. There was a meeting scheduled this, in a couple of days, I was going to go down to the speaker's office and tell her that I really thought it was a good idea to use the 2.9 million that had been appropriated for the rail between Fort Collins down to Colorado Springs. The, yeah, they call it the South Rail, but I'm more interested in Fort Collins to Longmont. And so, that meeting, I was told today that it's too late. They need action now. And so, the person who's kind of heading that up asked me to sign a letter saying that our community's, you know, for the 2.9 million. I didn't even think, like, you know what? I should probably poll council. I should probably wait till tonight. I just signed it. So, I apologize. But essentially, the letter was that we encourage the appropriation of that 2.9 million to look into the feasibility of actually the Southern Rail from Fort Collins to Colorado Springs, including how it would tie into Northwest Rail. And so, given our position on Northwest Rail, like I said, it didn't even dawn on me that it might be a debatable topic. But in the event that it is, we should probably, tell me that now, so I can contact them and tell them that, nah, just kidding. We don't want you to look into the Southern Rail route. Anybody want to yell at me? All right, good. Then I'm not going to take back the letter. So, with that, are there any city manager remarks?
Sandy has a couple of things she'd like to discuss with you.
Well, she's coming up. The reason I did that, Scouts, is I only have one vote on council. I'm not allowed to do whatever I want, even though sometimes I really wish I could.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to talk about your retreat.
All right.
I know, right? So, I sent an email last week asking for some specifics around times and dates and topics and things like that. And for the benefit of the public, I just want to lay out what that looked like. We asked whether you'd like the retreat to be one or two days. The council pretty much said two days, makes a lot of sense. And the unanimous date was the May 18 to 19, which is the first date. I know that we had some suggestions to make it earlier, but other council members couldn't make it for that period of time. So, the retreat will be May 18 to 19. We'll put this on your schedule tomorrow morning so that you are able to have that blocked. During your Friday work session a couple of weeks ago, you talked about your desires for the retreat. for the retreat, including questions like, what's going to be your big mark on Longmont? What are your big hairy audacious goals, priorities, and what do you want to accomplish when you're in office? We talked about framing that in the Envision Longmont framework. There was some suggestion around framing that also with the U.S. Constitution and the Charter, really taking a look at where do we start. And so we'll add some pieces of that in there to ground everybody. And then also, this month, we are asking citizens to spend $100 on city priorities, Envision Longmont priorities, which are now aligned. So we'll have those results ready for you for the May 18th date as well, for you to consider, as you are determining priorities and targets and metrics, because we'd like to carry that conversation all the way through to determine even what the annual report will look like, based on the retreat priorities. We also asked our, do you want to stay in Longmont for the retreat? The answer was yes. There was one suggestion to go to Casa Bonita, or someplace fun. The museum and...
How dare you! Who was that?
I can't even imagine. But we thought maybe the Wild Game might be available, or the museum was the other suggestion. So we'll find a place in Longmont for us to be able to gather. And then lastly was, are there other elements you'd like to see in the retreat? And some of the comments, which we will try to work into the agenda, which you will see soon, is a rubric around development of council presentations. As Harold mentioned, Holly Milney and I met this last week to talk a little bit about a template that could be presented to staff, along with some of the presentation guidelines that we gave them a couple of weeks ago. Also, dinner Friday night with spouses was suggested, extending code updates, and that's something I'll talk about with Joni. And then really just laying it all out, so that we have clear priorities and clear metrics and targets moving forward. So I will put together that agenda, so that you can approve that pretty soon on a consent agenda. But in the meantime, we'll block your calendars from May 18th and 19th.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Watch this. Scouts, good idea or bad idea to go to Casa Bonita for work retreat?
I heard it bad.
I love the ape. They're just the ape in Black Bart's Cave. I mean, yeah. I'll take you, Polly. We'll go sometime. All right. City manager remarks? Anything else? Mr. May, city attorney remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
Great. There's nothing else? This meeting is adjourned. You lucked out. Usually, we're done like at 11:00.